Good morning, everybody, and welcome to Service 20 Minute Neighborhood Practitioner Network. I'm Ian Leach, the Chief Executive of SURF. If this is your first time at this network, welcome and thank you for joining us. The purpose of the network is to share the developing practice of the Developing Policy Agenda of 20 Minute Neighborhood, something that has been in the ether for a number of years, but has obviously risen quite rapidly within Scotland over the past two years, appearing in political manifestos and then being in the programme for government, and then obviously becoming a policy within National Planning Framework Draft, National Planning Framework IV, which was out for consultation, a lot of us responded to that. And that remains present to be published at some point this autumn. It will be published and put through Parliament for final sign-off. There's been quite an interesting debate on it, and I suppose SURF's take on 20 Minute Neighborhoods is we are very interested in what this means, particularly for communities that are experiencing economic deprivation. And we're very interested in how a national policy can be applied in this context in both rural and urban Scotland, because a lot of the models of 20 Minute Neighborhoods have come from cities, from quite dense cities around the world, and we're possibly the first countries to try and apply it as a policy nationwide. So the purpose of the network is to share what's happening across Scotland and from communities to local authorities and to maybe influence the national policy so that it is workable in all situations, and for us to learn from each other as well as we go along, because it's a developing area of policy. Our last session, we had Aberdeen Sheriff Council presenting their work on it, to be focused around their academy towns. And we also heard from John Olsen, from a public health perspective, and looking at sort of data analysis, which was very interesting in that it revealed that the most economically deprived places in Scotland were in some ways best positioned in delivery, to deliver 20 minute neighborhoods in the services that they had. But obviously, that was based on just data analysis, and we know that John is doing, continuing to do some work, and there was also discussion with the Scottish Government about what his research means. That was maybe a bit of a surprising find in that session. And we also heard from Transport Scotland about how we continue the discussion about reducing car use as being one of the drivers to deliver the 20 minute neighborhood. But today, we're looking, we have two speakers today, and if you were at our conference in June, we had Dr. Hassan Alwer from the University of Dundee, who gave a very short presentation on the promise that we would bring him back for a longer period. So he is joining us this morning. And then we have Richard Boddington, the Secretary of the German Community Development Trust, who is looking at it from a community perspective, because the discussion around 20 minute neighborhoods has sort of sat in sort of policy academia, but we're very interested in what does this mean for communities? How do non-urbanist, non-academic, non-politico use this policy for the benefit of their community? And German have been doing some work in the National Park over the past year, and so Richard is going to present on that. And the good news for today is we also, we've timed in a comfort break, which was requested by some of you, and the feedback we got from the last meeting, which will be taking place at 11:10. So that's the purpose of today, we have some open time at the end of it for you to share any information on work that you're doing or to raise any further questions that you may have around 20 minute neighborhoods, which may not be particularly for the speakers, but just for the general collection of people that are in the room. But if you have anything that you want to share specifically at the end about work that you're doing, or you think that we benefit from a wider audience hearing about, put a message in the chat and so that I can make sure that I invite you to tell us about it at the end. We're talking to some other people about future meetings of the forum, particularly around growing, including growing spaces within the 20 minute neighborhood concept, which we know that there's a bit of an upside for, and there's certainly a huge amount of work taking place in the community around community growing. And so we think that would be an interesting aspect in the 20 minute neighborhood discussion. So that's enough for me, and I'm now going to hand you over to Hassan. Hassan, the screen is yours.
Hello, good morning, everyone, and thanks for the invite once again. Let me start sharing my slides. I believe you.
That's great, we can see that, yeah. There is, yeah, if you close, there's a little window in the, open in the middle of it, you might need to close, that says find and replace.
Okay, just one second then. Apologies, just I am struggling on controlling the mouse now. Just one second. Okay, just one second. Here we go. Is that any better?
The window, the finding of place is still over obscuring part of your presentation.
Is it?
Yeah, even when you, yeah, you've changed image, but it's still.
Is it? Let me, let me start from again then. Is that any better?
Still there, I think if you come out of it again, I think if you close it, if you, can you see the find and replace box?
Let me close this. Let me open. Apologies, it might be from my side.
It seems to be, it's a window that's open on your, on your screen, that's, it's a small, it's a small window, but it's still obscuring your presentation slightly.
Okay, let's try. Share screen. How about if I share the desktop and then I put the screen on? Can you see my slide or no?
Yep, we can see that, yeah, that's working perfectly.
Is it? Okay.
Yeah.
Great.
That's great.
Very good morning, everyone, and once again, thanks for the invite. Today, I am going to share some of my ongoing work on the concept of the 20 Minutes Neighborhood, what started really three, four years ago, before even the pandemic. What I am going to propose today is not only based on my, on the work I've been doing, but also on the back of my engagement with colleagues in Scotland, practitioners, policymakers, even my former students as well, and some of them are attending my sessions, but also engagement with some colleagues in Europe in terms of learning from best practices. So what you're going to see is really kind of bringing theory, practice, policy, but also reflections and observations, working with different agencies and governments, local authorities, and so on. And as I said, it's as well the use of the Pairs and Dundee Cities as an urban lab and my recent work as well overseas. Now, I would like to start with this statement. Where do we belong when everything's at the moment is really on the move? The current energy and inflation crisis, the war in Ukraine, climate repair and climate emergency, the true health inequality and injustice we face, the legislation and the new policies, National Planning Framework Number Four, the new legislation around 20 Minutes Neighborhood, the expectation from our lifestyle. Yes, we all agree the future is important, but today becomes so important and priority. And if we are talking always about medium and long term, who cares and who is responsible? Let me start with really some national risk scenarios we face in country like Scotland, as part of the UK as well. House builders, devolvers are always focusing on primarily on the delivery of houses. Always they are interested in units and numbers, but always they don't retain long-term investment. And always that has an impact on the performance of the neighborhood after delivery. There is limited power of competition over the last really 20 to 30 years to incentivize and drive up quality in countries like the UK and Scotland. There is always failure to bring about greater diversity and choices of what we deliver and what we give to the community and society. The development established models we have had for a long time is fully based on risk and reward. And it is really buried not only in the planning system, in the banking, in public sector recruitment, but also in the construction industry. So that's mean there is absence all the time to demonstrate to the, to society that there is valuable alternatives. Sometimes the prevailing terms and condition under building developments may prove hard even to change, given it is really, we get used to this issue of risk and reward. Now, I don't want to define 20 Minutes Neighborhood by now, I know you have enough, but the argument about the 20 minutes or 15, whatever you call it, I don't think time matter here most. It's about how we access facilities and services within the first 800 metres. That's what Scotch Government, SASS Trans and other NGOs agreed. But after lots of discussions with colleagues and reading, it's about believability, the access to services and health, cars, schools, healthy foods. It's about giving more local choices, restaurants, specialist services, library, more walkable and cycleable in terms of promoting active travel and health wellbeing, but also the importance of density and mix and diversity of houses. So basically, ultimately, it's how we really reduce our aggregate carbon dioxide. Everyone admitted there is no one-size-fits-all approach, especially in countries like Scotland, where you have the extreme rural, the suburban and the urban and the centre scores. So identity as well here to me, becoming so, so important in terms of more localized sense of self and community. Having said that, having said that, there is no way to capture all what I proposed in one single coherent framework. Why? There is a high degree of complexity involved in the description of 20 Minutes Neighborhood. It's neither about the planning on its own nor architecture. Various factors, real estate, economy, politics, urban design affect the decisions and the actions we might recommend. But also the different political and social and cultural issues in which this form of planning activity can be undertaken. We need to acknowledge the importance of mess. And our places are messy. But through collaboration, this may require not only collaboration, but also passionate relationship, helping each other, because we're dealing with the very fuzzy concepts. Let me read quickly and apologies, there is a lot of text, but those are quite key to me. And this is up to 2020. Approximately in Scotland, more than 70% of people in Scotland live in urban areas, which account for only 2% of Scotland's land service, imagine. Around 12% of those population live in small towns of less than 10,000 people. Of those, around 70% are located within 30 minutes drive of large settlement, with other 30% located more remotely. Transport, we all agreed, is a key factor when it's come to the emissions. And it's only declined, by the way, up to 2020 by 5% since 1990. And imagine approximately 60%, 66% of all journeys in Scotland are reported to be made by car, which is an increase of 7.7% over five years. This is, by the way, up to 2020. 40% of these are less imagined, 40% of those are less than two miles in length, and those could be really potentially covered by bicycle or foot. When it's come to the 20 Minutes Neighborhood, we must appreciate the hierarchy of local neighborhoods within city centre, within regions, rather than boil it down to one-size-fits-all approach. So no brainer, no more than ever, we need to have this kind of coordination between region, city, neighborhood and buildings. So this kind of relationship and coordination require close coordination, which really will help conserving resources. And this is because I am so worried about now, to be honest, what is the next crisis? Food provisions to me and supply is key. No, no wonder why we really need to start understanding the relationship with forest, with countryside and with agriculture. This relationship really needs to be defined to protect the countryside, but also protect food production and productive agricultural land. Distance demand transport, but also more land take, that's to me is quite key. There is now tendency in Scotland, people really start living and working from home. This really required to mean new way of thinking. And no brainer now, Freiburg 15 years ago said, city should be a city of connected vibrant neighborhood, a city of short distances. We need to start really thinking seriously about how do we shorten the distances and how to make it walkable. But this is city as well, this is to me a concept of inclusivity. So this is a city for all and neighborhoods for all and made by all. This idea of sharing and making most of resources and most of what we have really becoming key. So this is about connected, not necessarily isolated. We need to start, especially we face an issues in rural, what is 20 Minutes Neighborhood or 20 Minutes Community, as Nick Wright said, in rural area where you do have low, low density. You can't afford to invest in a lot of infrastructure or amenities or new facilities. We need to start having this kind of investing in key hubs, but also trying different things in terms of linking. Clustering communities to me becoming key. Clustering communities around key facilities, key services, where each of those neighborhoods becoming specialized on, on what they offer is key. But for that to work, you have to enhance connectivity. So active trouble is one of the biggest challenge to make this idea of clustering neighborhoods, clustering the community in countries like Scotland is key. But this is as well about circulating capital, circulating economy, making more of what we have and sharing the resources. And one of my students find, find that the issue of smart clacking could be one of this idea linked places, but also creating hubs. And this is as well, one of the neighborhood might be specialized in market, local market. The other one might have sport halls or schools. We need to start really making what most of what we have, but also making most of the underutilized spaces. But connectivity is really key for that to work. And by the way, in Oxford Shire as well, they tried this concept. The concept is not new, but also my colleague Stephen Wellesley in Denmark as well, shared this with us as well, how they're trying to create a whole life of clusterings, where each cluster might specialize on what they offer and link it. Neighborhood is a fuzzy place, my friend, and I agree with you. It's difficult even to find, to define physical boundaries sometimes, or even institutionals or administrative boundaries. But it is as well about some subjective identifications. Interestingly, for local authorities, neighborhood always defined by the catchment of services or elementary schools. But sometimes it could be defined by special units. Private sectors might totally define it in terms of maximizing how many units you might have in this land. And David Brooks said recently, it could be that neighborhood, not the individual, is the essential unit. Social change, if you are trying to improve lives, maybe you have to think about changing many elements of a single neighborhood. But this has to be in a systematic way and a steady beast. The great David Sim, he said one day, neighborhood is not a place, I found that so interesting. It is a state of mind. So he's trying to emphasize the issue of the importance of social wellbeing, the importance of creating neighborliness rather than housing state. One in which our heart are open, we connect with others, we care. So my goodness, connections always is important, not only physical, but also the social one, which really give us always a sense of pride. So what I am referring to 20 Minutes Neighborhood is not about the physicality always or measurable materiality. It's also about the experience, the spirituality, the functionality of that neighborhood in terms of conviviality, which has a significant share, something you feel proud. This really require integral approach to neighborhood. And this is my questions to all of you, what is, what is the big idea here? We've been delivering this kind of neighborhoods for the last 50 years. What is it? Does it connect to local destination? We do acknowledge there is a major failure of oversupply, but also there is poor quality of development. And here we go, this is what you see always, everywhere in the UK and beyond. And I really like this quote, people live in houses, but where do houses live? Imagine in houses like this, 40% of the, of the land goes just into roads and parking, 10% into pavement, which is to be honest, to do with parking, and 25% private gardens and 23, 23% building footprint. But there is no hierarchy, there is no place, there is no sense of place, it's actually a place of everywhere. What strike me, if you look, over the last 100 years or so, the music productions has improved dramatically. The way we built kitchen, the way we build even motor car. Or that housing and what we deliver in terms of housing hasn't evolved, especially in terms of the diversity and so on. And this is what we end up, the problem, the problem with this kind of housing state. A lot of research, they, they show that there is always contributed to decline in public health. They have a poor accessibility, always lead to social isolations, limited public transport, public participation associated with congestions, but there is no investment. Because when you have, when you don't have a critical mass, there is no way to invest in a housing state like this. And the system isn't broken, guys, it really was built this way. And I really like, why we need a new narrative now, call it whatever you call, by the way. For me, there is no differences between good neighborhood or sustainable neighborhood or walkable neighborhood. They really mean the same things at the end of the day. I don't mind town growings so long as they grow and don't merely spread like gravy over a tablecloth. I would like to start with some key questions. When it's come to the challenge of delivery 20 Minutes Neighborhood, how do zoning patterns affect the delivery of 20 Minutes Neighborhood? If you look at the figure on the top, this is what we used to deliver up to now. Everything's built about car movability, this kind of buds itself. No connection, no linkages, no brainer people, you, you giving people a direct invite to buy a car and to drive a car. This kind of homogeneity in land use is seen as contributing to segregation, mono-functional, imbalance even in jobs or housing distribution, really leading to more commuting by car and resulting in congestions and pollutions. This idea of woods where each use shopping centers, school, business park, conceived as a separate components with its own car parking provision and enjoying access to collector or main distributed. But the problem with this kind of approach, this kind of configuration is determine how disconnected or unbearable it is. So this will affect people patterns of movement and not only that. It will stakeholders in Scotland will struggle how to engage in active trouble. This kind of model will really make it difficult for us. The last 50 years, road engineer, transport engineer, planning authorities accepted widely that the concept of a tree-like street, like the one you see in the screen, is resulted is really unconnected and illegible and not burnable enough. In fact, making interventions in those kind of existing neighborhood, more or less, is really impossible, I could tell you. Because it's not built about, about connectivity whatsoever. I don't see how this kind of patterns, the cloudy sacks will work in the concept of 20 Minutes Neighborhood. Why? Because just the principles is not right. You build road first and then houses coming later, and it's all about meeting the standards. 20 to 20 metres for gardens, 20 to 20 metres for roads, and then just become repetitive. It really become a repetitive, because there is no urban structure, there is no urban morphology, built around block, lot, streets or even block, and this is what we deliver and we keep delivering. The average density in countries like Scotland is around 20, 15 to 20, imagine. That's very, very low, very, very low. And I repeat myself, this is an interesting study by SASS Trans, 20 Minutes Neighborhood, more or less, in a lot of area will be impossible. Why? Because for, for the street patterns themselves to work, there is a significant jigsaw is missing, is really missing. And it may require interventions beyond planning authorities, buying the land or maybe knocking some of those houses or so on. So there will be unpopular solution, which might be very costly. And it's really beyond the planning. This is one of the cases studies we looked at in Watford here in Dundee, more or less, really very impossible to make linkages within the same area. It's really impossible, and we keep delivering the same kind of houses. So we need really to start visiting our neighborhood as a connected neighborhood. But the questions here, how do we provide sustainable connections, physical and services, to join up neighborhoods to the town and to the wider connections? But this also apply to the city centre. This is an interesting studies by Glasgow City Centre, by Aston Smith Lord, where they invented this concept that neighborhood could be overlapped, neighborhood, the town centres, where this idea of sharing, sharing services, facilities, but they did acknowledge for this to work, you have to improve connections and connectivity and permeability. An interesting studies by Bass for All shows factor which could, which would be important when choosing where you live in Scotland. Able to walk, to walk, people admit that's wow, they would be able to walk within 75% near to local shops and facilities or a regular bus services versus convenient to drive. The people will prefer to go to drive if it is beyond 15 or 20 minutes, 33%. So yes, there is desire for people, if they want to choose where to live, to be close to local shops and facilities or regular buses, services or even a train station. But also, the people as well in Scotland said the duration would be prepared to walk. Some of them, they said they are willing to walk for less than 10 minutes if they have a nearest shop that sell everyday necessity. So that's as well to me is very key, or if they are nearest public transport or near, near primary school. Here we go now, we come to the issue of density. Density, density is not only about the numbers of units you deliver, it's not about numbers. Density has to be linked with the, with the intensity of uses and proximity. There are three things, I will explain them later on. So there is no hard fast and rules how to deal with density. Sometimes high-density place looks really great, sometimes low-density place could look, could look great. So there is no one size, one-size-fits-all approach. People perceive, the perceptions of density is very, very important, because it could influence, that's quite important. It could really influence how they behave, how they respond emotionally, psychologically to their surrounding environment. So it has an important impact on things like equality of life or even mental and physical wellbeing. And sometimes what can be dense in an area could be, could be, could be, could be low for another area. So the density is more than. So the density is more than visual, it's rather than out of. What I liked about this quote, density is an outcome, not a determinant. It should evolve as a consequence, consequences of correlation, intensity of occupation and uses with accessibility and proximity to facilities and services. And a lot of people measure density differently. Density could be the number of people bear hectare, so this is to me the intensity of occupation. Number of units or dwelling bear hectare, that's called density. And sometimes there is capital expenditures bear hectare, cost bear hectare or cost bear capita. We need to start bringing the elements of cost here to make the case for private sectors. So this is why three things, my colleagues, we found from research and, and relationship with practitioners. Intensity and mixed uses, the facilities and facility and services and density, really vital uh 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 elements for compact places of small. So, and, and this is to me without losing the access to green and nature. And it's not the new, Richard Rogers in his book highlighted the importance of the interrogation ship between where you put dense houses alongside the transits and main transports, but also that diversing, diversifying what we offer. Diversifying, this is about mixing of everything. This is not about just having a, a monofunctional housing types or a monofunctional services. The importance of how we facilitate the mixing, the, 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 the mixing is really very key. If we want to create what I call it neighbourliness, which we missed, neighbourliness is very key. Richard Rogers went on and I'm happy to share this slide to show clearly what kind of safer facilities and services we should have for seven thousand five hundred people. And then if we start sharing with other neighbours and where they overlap and how they overlap and what kind of connectivity we should have between this idea of sharing, sharing facilities and, and services through better public linkages and better public transportations in order to serve the right density. And as I said, we really need to start looking at mid-density. I am a big fan of mid-density, I've done a very Sarah studies in London uh 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 over the last two months or so on. And I, I found there are fantastic schemes where density will not interfere with privacy. People in Europe, in the UK, they feel a little bit reluctant with the concept of mid or high density because they feel this may interfere with privacy and this is not necessarily the case. What we found, there are a lot of scheme where the density between forty five up to fifty and the, the system work well. The system really work well. In Scotland, as I said, the average is really between fifteen up to twenty five. And this is what density, density is really not about units only. It's about how you deal with the urban form, how you deal with the spaces between the buildings. The example to the left hand side, this is three examples showing seventy five units. But this is how we make most of the land, but also how do we make relationship between private and public sector, uh public spaces? So it's really about, to me, how you deal with the urban forms. Density not necessarily about building towers, but also higher density, not necessarily about building smaller unit. But density as well to work, it should be as well built around key transport nodes and we really need to start investing, especially in the, in the current infrastructure and in current uh 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 how do you want to say, transport nodes we have had in Scotland. And also, density is about establishing a massing strategy that support the spatial hierarchy in terms of intensity of buildings should really reflect the importance of shared places and spatial framework. But also, it should be about promoting mixed tenure. This is why facilitating the, 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 the complexity here is very important. I really like this slide from, from Denmark, from a, 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 a quite established firm called Effects, where they see neighbourhood as an ecological habitat. Where they are so interested in embracing neighbourhood with nature, not with green, with nature. But the whole idea is about how do we reduce the land use take? But also how do we achieve a reduction in environmental impact, increasing density, but really uh uh creating what they call it a new, a human habitat? Where it's really linked with nature and biodiversity, moving away from this separated typical homes to more active community. I have to admit with discussion with colleague in Denmark, people sometimes they, they perceive this as if it is interfere with privacy, as I said earlier. But this is another firm as well in, 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 in Sweden, they try as well to create this kind of informal language, increasing the density, free the spaces in between and having more forest, let us put it this way, and more blue water connections. This is another, uh 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 really quite well known scheme in Cambridge, a greater, greater uh night on where the architects invested heavily in the quality of the landscaping, but more importantly, working with local authority in, in Cambridge, they managed to move away from this idea of houses has to be twenty meters of distance. It's no, the architect, in clever way, managed to create, protect the privacy but by the use of architectural language and by the use of density and creating shared spaces and moving the car away from the, the system. And the car in fact is built inside the houses, if I may say. The whole idea is creating shared spaces and places and then density is between forty five and fifty. This is another extreme examples, but I visited that and it really worked well. This is a very much higher density, dense with around seventy, seventy five. But the key here, everything was, if I may say, accessible within five to ten minutes. You have access uh to transport, to, to active travel, main transport hubs and public runs and green. What is important as well, how do we promote mixed tenure, as I said earlier? Diversifying what we give to the community, some places to live, to work, flats or cottage, it co-housing, shit, really diversity, because when you, when you diversify the housing types, automatically you will diversify the amenities and facilities and you cater for all. So this is my questions, is achieving a critical mass of people crucial to delivery of the twenty minutes? Absolutely yes. But we need to have the right mixing of activities to have the right mixing of people. For that to work, that's really very key. And this is to me actually to do with inclusivity. And as I said earlier, this is about facilitating the complexity and the price bandwidth in the area. So diversity and hetero- heterogeneous landscape is really key to create attractive, but also sustainable community. So we need to start, if we want to achieve sustainability, we need to move away from heterogeneous land use into, into more, uh 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 sorry, homogeneous land use into more heterogeneous land use. That must be promoted. But also, we need to appreciate activity always draw people to places. So activities create that social opportunity to support the required range of services and function and to meet, to enable them to meet their own needs. So the more diverse or complex the place and the activity, the more people are likely to be attracted to live, to stay and to work, so quality matter most, it's not about linking A to B. It's really twenty minutes neighbourhood is not about only linking A to B. It's about as well the journey and the destination and amenity as well as proximity. There is no point living next to public space or public, or green park if it is unsafe or dirty and has antisocial behaviour. There is no, no point living next to health standard if you can't get a GB appointment. There is no point living next to a bus stop if services stop at five PM or six PM in the evening. So quality is really very important. And Yan Gale advocate a twelve airman quality and we really need to bring them the protection, the comfort, the enjoyment. Those to me is really become, become really part and they should be part of the twenty minutes neighbourhood. So my friend, experience is really key as well. Three things I say, I would like to, you to think about them and they correlate to each other. The important of what I call them the three Ds, distance, how far you can walk in twenty minutes, which is what the government agreed eight, eight hundred meters. But within that, the destination and experience and intensity of, of uses is everything you need on a daily basis within that distance. And the last one, density and intensity of your occupation. Are there enough people in the area to support the businesses and facilities you need for daily needs? Sometimes for one little shop, you need one thousand people, just imagine, there are a lot of statistics about it. But also, we need to start really taking, considering the physical settings of how we create informal social, cultural relationship and interactions, places for sharing, blessing for engagement. This is required, what I call it, the importance of investing on shared places. We need more community anchors, more restaurants. All those what I call them shared places really are key for the place to work. And as Ling, uh 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 Kavel Lynch said one day, nothing is experienced by itself, but always in relation to the surrounding, the sequence of events leading up to the memory of past experience. So we really need public spaces as a network and, but also it is a destination. We need to really start encouraging the re- redistribution, linkages and waving together can really help making public event accessible to all community, like parks, like streets, activities and so on. And one of the questions I have now, what relationship between environment and behaviour is assumed in the, uh uh in, in the twenty minutes, uh twenty minutes neighbourhood? My, my answer to this, people quickly adapt to their travel behaviour to see, to suit the context of street layouts and infra- infrastructure they encounter. If it is to do with car and car orientation, it's so easy for people to buy car or use car. So we really need to take this idea, how the urban form or the physical form influence social change or even social behaviour. A well-functioned public realm with the richness of rich or shared places like community anchors, library, restaurant can build what I call it really social capital by reinforcing and melding social relationship. This should provide the gathering places we, which are of great importance of nourishing sociability and vibrancy of our neighbourhood. So my key message here, the configuration of urban structure determines how either connected or disconnected or burnable or impermeable it is. And this is what unfortunately we have had over the last fifty years, everything's become disjointed. Large roads, large infrastructure, large buildings and we really forget the importance of diversity and small units, which is based on lot blot, streets and block and this is what we end up at the moment. Really very low density, what we provided. And we have forgetting the importance of the generic structure of urban form and the hierarchy levels of related parts to the whole, how the streets and blocks in, in interrelated to buildings and but also to the arrangement and the design, design layout. And the problem with these kind of structures, the biggest one, a lot of research show it's not resilient, it's not adaptable and not ready for change whatsoever. If you look at the examples to the left hand side in this slide. This is showing a plan for an area, the green one. The typical housing standards, the way we do it, it's similar to what we did underneath. Meanwhile, when you go to the Danish system, where the Danish system embrace the idea of blot as part of the block and street, no, they deal with it as a small lot where it's meet the streets. So there is hierarchy structure to the urban morphology, but the beauty of the solution to the right hand side is adaptable, it is being built to be adaptable and resilient and open to change. Some of those small unit could be converted into, into shops sometimes or into office. Meanwhile, the left hand side, a lot of research show it's, there is no way to embrace change if it happens. We really need to start rethinking about the importance of streets and blot series and the blocks. And all those examples are not new to us by the way, if you look at the Howard historical towns, which has been resilient, adaptable, built around this concept. But also, we really need to start taking seriously the importance of streets, civic squares, which create a sense of enclosure, safety, protection, but more importantly, how do we nurture social interaction? So how, and how do we perceive time and place, how do we encounter our places? Human senses is really key to me. We need to revisit those, but it's also about being small, being slow, being slow, being human, being everyday, culture, health, quality of time. We need to appreciate, you can't fix a place, it's, there is always continuous evolution. And things really change and it's very important to, to know how to shape the physical in order to shape our perceptions and our decisions. If you shape the physical, a work around cars, you will shape the perceptions of people around car and that will shape our decisions. This is a, a really lovely examples I found, I, I like it from my colleague Stephen Welsey in Ohrers. And I define neighbourhood now as an accumulation of bland layering of how we shape the physical in order to shape the perceptions and the decisions. Let me show you this little examples to the left. This is an, a rather empty, uh unutilized land in the centre of Ohrers city. The council wasn't sure what they should do about it, it was in, in a proper neighbourhood area. What they did, they start interfering and do a light touch interventions by planting some trees and green, but very temporary, using the, the concept of tactical urbanism. Why? In order to see how the neighbours, how, how the, the local and the neighbours will, might perceive, perceive such interventions. Over time, they notice people comes more to the area and really the area become more vibrant, more active. So that's to start shaping their perceptions and over time then local authorities install those solutions which the community like. So wow, you start shaping the physical in order to help shaping the perception and then shaping the decisions when you build the trust between the community. But this kind of solution may take time, some of those solution may take one or two years, some, some of them five to ten years, so it is an iterative learning process. And it should be about long-term goal and vision. So my conclusion and apologies if I run a little bit out of time, I would like to say. We need to start seeing towns and neighbourhoods as an ecological habitat. We need to appreciate that building neighbourhood is really about accumulation of bland layering of how we shape the physical perceptions and decisions. We need to address and embrace and acknowledge future uncertainty and complexity. Neighbourhood doesn't, there is no one ownership for the concept itself, it's not only about planning authorities. It's not only about Scottish government, this really need joint up thinking the relationship between the top down and bottom up really very key. But neighbourhood have a psychological and environmental as well as economic value. You cannot build sustainable neighbourhood from scratch, it may take sometimes two to three generation within which it is an iterative and learning planning process. It is a multifaceted approach, it's not only about the physical, but place making important. It does require bottom up and also top down and it really build, need to build around the trust and common purpose between team members. So future neighbourhoods for the existing and the new will require to me to think and act differently. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Hassan. You're spot on time, so excellent. Yeah, you said you had a lot of slides, but we did, we, we got through them, so thank you very much. And I think you well illustrated, this was one of my points about twenty minute neighbourhoods. It's not a new idea, it's a distillation of It's not a new idea. It's a distillation of what is just good plan, good, should be good planning. And you've drawn a very good recent history of what good planning should look like that we've maybe failed to implement, but maybe twenty minute neighbourhood as a policy is going to help us achieve that. So questions from the audience. And there's been a couple, there's been quite a bit of chat in the side box from Jonathan Clarkson. Jonathan, I think you're teeing yourself up for presentation at a future meeting of the forum. And because you have a lot to say, you say you're doing work in Perkin-Ross. And there's a question from Ashley, but before I take Ashley's question, John Reed has his hand up. John.
Hello, a couple of observations. I really enjoyed that, Hassan. Thank you very much. Really enlightening because from my perspective, from a community regeneration engagement person, a lot of my stuff is people-centred, but I obviously notice the physicality of a, of a city. One of the things I've noticed when I travel abroad, I go to Germany, that plan that you set, that you set out where you have houses and flats and a factory and a restaurant and a few little shops, it works really well. And whenever you go in Germany, high streets are so vibrant and so well-used because there's this real mix. I suppose my concern is, or not concern, my, my thought is coming up to Glasgow from London, where in London, from a very early age, I'm encouraged to travel out of my local area. What I found coming to Scotland is it's really difficult to get people to even think about twenty-minute neighbourhoods. They're so connected to a very small part of their community, but they don't want to step outside that. So alongside all the stuff that you've just said, which I completely buy into, what will be doing to encourage education of young people? What, what are schools doing for instance? This is a Scottish government-led initiative, you know, the neighbourhood stuff. What are we doing in schools to say to young people, actually, let's get you out? Go to the shops that are in the other side of Glasgow, go visit somewhere else. I don't know if that is being done enough to then encourage the stuff that you're saying. It's just, it's just a view.
Hassan, have you got any thoughts on that?
I'm, I'm not sure whether I have a, a, an, a clear answer for it, but I totally agree with you. It's, 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 how do you want me to say, twenty minutes neighbourhood is really not a technical exercise. It's not a technical exercise. It does need a bottom-up approach and education. Raising awareness is really key for it to work. But let me be a little bit positive. What I like about the concept, unlike walkable neighbourhood or sustainable neighbourhood or green neighbourhood or compact neighbourhood, there is wide, in Scotland specifically, a lot of people really talk about it. I'm talking about local community. Of course, of course, they acknowledge the challenge with it, but what I like, unlike previous concepts, there is wide acceptance to the concept itself. But it should come as well with social change and social behaviour. How do we impact and influence? But I need to say that this is quite important. It's not enough to say to people, look, guys, walkability and cycling is good for your health. You have to have the right infrastructure to affect and change people's behaviour. Let me give you a quick example if I, if, if you allow me. Seventy percent of people in Copenhagen now are on bike. Seventy percent. When, two years ago, when the council asked them, why you use the bike? Guess what was the first three answers? Safe, quicker and cheaper. And continuous saving time. We really need to start investing in infrastructure which affect people's behaviour. And I repeat myself, it's not enough to say to people, look, bike is good for your health and wellbeing. People will look at it from very different perspective, especially money, time and saving, plus the safety.
Okay. So what you're saying is provide the infrastructure and the behaviour will follow. And we have to, we have to show leadership, which actually leads into actually Ashley's question. And Ashley asks, high schools will always argue that this is what people want. And if homes for Scotland were here, they would tell us that yes, their feedback from their members is that this is what people want. How do we get the consumer to demand something different? And she also points out, we still have years of consented characterless development to be delivered walking in car dependency because there are existing planning consents. And what's your take on that, Hassan? The, the, we're kind of depending on the market to deliver something. You pointed out the market delivered the same thing over and over and again. That the market is saying that's what the public wants.
If I may tell you, and I am raising it as a concerns. How do we get people in the market, house builders, they are by the way, six or seven in Scotland. They dominate the market. How do we get them engaged in the twenty minutes neighbourhood? I am struggling myself, I could tell you. I am really struggling. I did invite some people to come to this too. There is no interest. And what frustrates me, we all here now, wow, we've got fifty people here now in the Zoom. We all agree that, you know, twenty minutes neighbourhood is could be important for us. How do we get them engaged? I found it so difficult. The only way to get them engaged, to show them an evidence. The examples I show in Cambridge. Trust me, it was win-win. It was win-win to the community, win-win to the architecture team, let us put it this way, but also to the private sectors, private developer. Because having more dense areas manage to produce more units, if you allow me to say eight units, although I call it dwelling, but they managed to generate more profit. The key here, who is prepared to put more money at the beginning? Who is going to put the money at the beginning?
I mean, it's one of the, one of the points you made around the fact that developers don't have a long-term interest. And Living Streets gave a presentation at one of our earlier forum meetings. And I know that their analysis was of new developments, one of the most positive ones that they analyzed was one that was owned by, you know, owned by an, owned by an arrow. And it's somebody who owns land in the north of Scotland and has a long-term plan for building a settlement. And they had created the least, the most barrier-free settlement of all the ones that they had a look at. And I suppose I've recently been looking at one in East Lothian, which again is owned by Merrill Williams in March. And it's right beside a train station, it has character, it is, it looks like it's going to be much less car-dependent. It has a level of, um, high density within it. And but again, there's a reputational desire for it to be high-quality because there is a long-term landowner, which I'm uncomfortable with. But they, they have a long-term interest in it, whereas some of the other more standard developers, not all of them, but some, some of the big ones maybe don't have that. And I suppose, and how we, if we're not changing that, I suppose it comes down to who is deciding what can be built are the only ones that can, um, create that. I wanted to ask you something about density, Hassan, because historically, density has increased through the redevelopment of existing sites. So villages grew into towns, grew into cities. And we redeveloped the centre and that became the denser point. But what we have done now is we have now these settlements with flybase and suburban edges. I'm a child of a cul-de-sac, quite like to, um, but densifying those, redeveloping those areas is a challenge because a lot of them are under private ownership. And even if they're not under private ownership, they are people's homes. And we, we know that the huge disadvantages of displacing people. And so we are looking at then developing beyond that, but maybe in a dense way if it's associated with travel. So we would be looking at creating settlements that looked different to what we're used to with dense centres, less dense suburbs. And then what we build next to that is that, should that be dense? And even if historically and how we think about places, that would be a different approach.
The way I see it, if I may say, when I travel to Denmark and, and Germany, when you talk about density, it's so important to, to link it and correlate it with reliable public transportations or transport transit and also key facilities and services. I think that's, that's will be a really an opportunity. Recently, Otricht, Otricht City, they proposed, they want to have their city, by the way, ten-minute city, interestingly. And when I looked at the maps, I do have a slide for it. All future growth in Otricht will be around key hubs and key nodes around the main transport nodes. And they're going to invest heavily in key infrastructure amenities and services. I think there is a great opportunity for Scotland, but bear in mind, there is a lot of small rural settlements with really very low density. This is why I am so interested in this idea of clustering and linkages. But back to what I said, active travel and connectivity will be key for that to work.
And I think the clustering, and previous, you maybe said Nick Wright's research on, is looking at clustering of villages, particularly more and more of the ones he looks at is up on the side of Loch Ness. And it is around making, I think, use villages that specialize in things, but they're all connected to each other, which comes back to a transport connection, which is, is next to further, not that's active transport, which is not available for everybody, um, or usable by everybody or possible by everybody. But making sure that there is another form of transport where people can move between those cluster settlements. Is there any other questions? I see Lucy has popped in the Poundbury article. And again, another example of something with a, a long-term where there's a long-term interest, which is also associated with reputation. Has anybody else got any questions for?
Or what I would like, what kind of incentive we need in Scotland really to bring public, a private sector with us? Seriously, what kind of incentive? How do we make them engaged with us? What is it? What, what they need as an incentive from, from Scottish government or local authority? How really do we get them engaged in, in, well, look, the existing one come with its challenges. But I am even worried now, very worried about the new ones. Because I have seen a lot of bare mission being granted for massive, massive housing around all cities in Scotland. So what do we need to change that? Seriously? I don't have an answer. I don't have an answer.
Anthony McGinnis has just been saying, but I should go before I comment. Davina, you have your hand up.
Yeah, thanks, Ewan. Like, I feel that all us round, round the Zoom, round the table, whatever, we're all champions for twenty-minute neighbourhoods. But I'm not convinced the bulk of people in the communities still get the concept. And what the benefits it would bring to their daily lives. And I know that individually, we're all trying to educate people. But as John said, I think we need to do a sort of campaign at possibly a school level that then gets the kids thinking about how they could live their lives in the future. And then that will actually, um, get them talking about it with their parents, their grandparents. And that sort of will instill the whole concept into their daily lives. And there was something on the BBC, I can't, I might have been Edinburgh, I can't remember, it was probably about a couple of months ago. And at a consultation meeting the next day. And I had asked people, did you see that clip on the BBC News about twenty-minute neighbourhoods? And somebody said, yeah, but they're not relevant to us. And this is somebody within my local authority, which is Western Bartonshire. And I said, no, you're so wrong. These are really relevant to you. So it's that sort of education to make sure that people are aware of the concept and how it can make a difference to them.
You're getting a lot of people agreeing with you, Davina, in the chat, that it comes back to education and it's education of, of young people that's necessary. I think to me, one of the things that's interesting is because of the last, the last meeting, we had a presentation around, from Transport Scotland, around reducing car use. They have no budget to promote the reduction of car use. But we are all bombarded permanently by massive advertising about cars and on the street, in our homes, in the TV, in the cinema. And, and the reason that so much money goes into that advertising is because it's worth, it's worthwhile, it pays off for them to do. But we're not doing a similar level of advertising, you want to say education's advertising, but that, that information sharing. We're not doing the counter information sharing. And frankly, ban all advertising of certain things and cars may be one thing that, you know, should we be advertising cars that are having, have had such a major impact on how we structure society. And but that does bring back to the fact that the twenty-minute neighbourhood is not a planning issue. And it's not a health issue, it's not an education, it's all these issues tied together. And it's how we break the twenty-minute neighbourhood concept out of what has, understanding we've been led within planning circles. And because it's now featuring in MPF four, making sure that it's actually something that all other parts of local and national government are seen to be part of, which we know is happening on the Aberdeen presentation that we had last time. And shared some of that, that in Aberdeen, they are using it as a means of bringing all the services together. Question from Judy's asking, can we look at what is already happening to change, culture change in our own neighbourhood and build on that? And there is many groups that are, are working on it. So there are, there are communities, and I know that we have the Ripple project in attendance today. So we know that there are communities that are working on things. And, and we are about to hear from a, from a community that is doing some work in this. But it's eleven oh five. Can I, Hassan, do you want to have the final word before we break for?
Can I just wait, just two things if you allow me. It will take time. It will take time. In, in, in Denmark, they started in nineteen seventy, nineteen eighty. So time is really key. How we embrace and build time, I think we need to have a vision, a clear vision. Where then we want to be in two thousand and thirty or forty or fifty? What kind of transportations we should have? What kind of cycling we should have? We need to start from somewhere, but we need to embrace time is really key. Building change because we'll take time and people tend to resist a change if I may say. That's one. Also, if you allow me to say, to convince people about twenty minutes neighbourhood, whether young generation or local community or, or even private sector or public centres. Why not? Why not we build one or two, what I'll call them, exemplar, examples? Let us show what the twenty minutes neighbourhood means for Scottish people in twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four and let us aspire to. We need that local reference. Yes, we do have historical reference, like Brotheferry, like the, the, the Bears Old Town, like Edinburgh Old Town. But let us have two or three really prototypes, maybe driven by Scottish government.
So we do an excellent case study. Thank you very much, Hassan, and you're, thank you very much on behalf of the audience to you as well. So thanks very much for your contributions today and for spending more time with us and sharing, distilling your four or five years of effort. It's more than that really, thinking on this topic. So thank you, Hassan. It's now eleven oh seven. And my suggestion is that we have a break just now, a comfort break and come back in, I think we have said, at eleven ten. So, but we'll make it slightly longer than that. So we'll give you all five minutes and make it eleven twelve. Policy convening in Scotland. But we're now moving to a more community-focused perspective on twenty-minute neighbourhoods. And I think it's possibly going to refer to in the chat before, uh, previous meetings of the Twenty Minute Neighbourhood Practice Network around work that has been taking place within the Loch Lomond National and Trossock National Park. And there was a report published slightly earlier this year on the work that they've done there. And so we've invited Richard Bodington, who, as I said, is the Secretary of the Drumm Community Development Trust, to talk to us about twenty-minute villages in the park, the vision and roadmap for Drumm and villages of East Loch Lomond. So some of the things that we've heard, Hassan talking about, maybe we're not talking about massive urban development or density, but we're certainly going to be talking about connectivity and movement. And Richard, I will give you the floor.
Great. Thank you very much, Ewan. And, and thank you, Sam. As I say, it was very nice to see that although we're talking about quite different scales here and we're talking about different projects, but that quite a lot of the themes kind of do tie in with the work we've been doing. I'll just share my screen. Let's see. Okay, is that showing my?
That is, yep.
Excellent. And I'll just see if I can do something else as well, so I can see them properly. Great. Okay. Right. So, um, yes, I call this Living Well Locally and it's about the, the village I live in Drumm and whether it could be a twenty-minute neighbourhood or, or not. As I say, I'm coming at this from a very different angle. My background is actually in renewable energy and, um, an environmental consultancy. And I've lived in Drumm for about six years and I've somehow ended up being the Secretary of the Development Trust. So although I do have some kind of environmental and sustainable background. So although I do have some kind of environmental and sustainable background. I'm not, I I'm not at all coming at this from a kind of policy. Direction, but really just talking about our specific experience in in Drumm. Right, so the twenty minute neighborhood, I think, I think everyone's very familiar with the kind of. The sort of standard definition of a twenty minute walk from people's houses, although as we've been. As we've all been saying, that doesn't really cover it and it's a sort of rather more simplistic than the than the reality. And really, what what we're looking at here, what we've been trying to look at is is whether you can fit that concept into a into a. Very low density kind of rural area. Being that it was really developed for urban use originally. So a little bit about Drumm. It's quite a small village, it's only about eight hundred, eight hundred residents, about three hundred dwellings. Many of you may may know it, you may have driven through it on your way to East Loch Lomond. We're about ten minutes away from from Loch Lomond by a car. And we're about half an hour north of Glasgow by car and forty minutes west of Stirling by car. Public transport to any of those places takes quite a bit longer. We're well situated in terms of. Long distance kind of routes from the West Highland Way or just off the West Highland Way. We're also the start of the Rob Roy Way. We're quite close to the John Muir Way. And we're also on National Cycle Network seven. So. Yeah, quite a few long distance trails go through the village. So it's. It's quite well visited by walkers and cyclists and just generally by by tourists. Our our kind of our local villages are. Really Balfrom, Cullern, Croftamme. Balfrom and Cullern are a bit bigger than us. And they're both about four or five miles away and on some quite busy roads. So I say I'm the Secretary of the Development Trust and we've been quite active. Over the last two or three years, trying to make various improvements. And we're just coming to say now where we're updating our place plan, what was a community action plan. So we were keen to try and work out what the community's priorities were for the next ten years. And at the same time, as I was kind of wanting to do that. We're aware that the National Park Authority were also keen to look at twenty minute neighborhoods in rural areas. And so we got together with them and they actually helped us by funding a study. A twenty minute neighborhood study, which was undertaken by Fourth Environmental Link, who, again, some of you may be aware of. They are a charity and they're kind of focused on. Community solutions to the climate crisis. So things like active travel, local food, repair and reuse initiatives, that kind of thing. So that all came together quite nicely and and the upshot was that Fourth Environment Link. Came along and spent some time in the community, putting together. A study and a report about Drumm and the twenty minute neighborhood. Again, this this kind of diagram will be very familiar to 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 many of you. And a lot of the things on here. Kind of a very similarly applicable to to urban areas and to low density rural areas. Things like safe streets, local playgrounds, local health facilities. And schools, but other but other parts of it are more strongly affected by the fact that we're much lower density and a bit of an island with other villages. Further away. So things like walkability, local employment opportunities, public transport. Obviously, key, local shopping, cycling networks, all those bits are, yeah, don't work in quite the same way. And really what FPL were doing, we're trying to, yeah, to see what, see how they could adapt that. So. I feel very good. They they tried. Lots of different ways of engaging with the community to try and make sure they got voices from. From the whole community and not just the kind of the people who tend to turn up at community meetings. So the core of it was a sort of survey questionnaire, which was based on the place standard. But they also went, as in the the picture you can see here, they went to the. Went to the. Local primary school and spent a day doing, mapping some things with with them. They went to various local gatherings and local groups to talk to them. They did some walking interviews where they met in the square with people and went for a walk around the village and talked about things as they as they walked around the village. And a similar thing where they did some cycle rides. Starting in. Starting in local villages and cycling to Drumm and then, you know, back out again and kind of talked as we cycled along. There's more online talks, there's some pop ups in the village square and they did various capacity building sessions with different groups. I would say I think their experience with it, some of those worked better than others. We were in, you know, COVID times when it was all happening last winter, so that. That limited some of the things they were trying to do. And and the weather also limited quite a few of the kind of more outdoor things that they were, they wanted to do. I have a mental image still of them on a on a, on the village square with a little gazebo and the kind of horizontal rain blowing across. Across them. So, yeah, but but generally they had a pretty good go at guessing, trying to get in touch and get the views over on in the in the village. And and the findings you can see here on this, on this image. Again, it's a fairly standard place standard kind of metric. Going from, I think the top school we got was was six and the lowest was was two. And there are certain things that the village was very sort of strong on. The sense of identity, feeling safe and the idea of natural space, all of which. You can imagine because we're in the national park and we're surrounded by open spaces. And it is a fairly small and and safe community. But there were things the way we were, what's called less well in the in the responses from the the village were. Were particularly things around moving around. You know, public transport is the lowest with a two. And then things like moving around, moving around in the village got a four. I think that's partly because we've done some work on that recently to try and improve that. Traffic and parking were got a three, so also pretty low. The Drumm has no. Well, very limited public transport. We have a bus that goes from Drumm to Ballack, which is in Western Bartonshire. And that goes about every one and a half hours through the day. So we have one bus that goes there. So but we have no public transport between Drumm and the local villages, Croftamme. Croftamme, Cullern, Balfrom. There's no way to get to those villages by public transport. And similarly, there are no traffic free routes between Drumm and the local villages. And generally, you have to go on quite a busy road, at least somewhere to get to those places. So as a result, it is quite difficult to live in Drumm without access to a car. Because it's quite difficult to get anywhere else. Interestingly. Facilities and amenities on this on this plot. Schools are five, so that's quite, so that's quite quite strong, actually. And I'll just show you on the next slide how that actually works out in terms of the location of our amenities. So within Drumm itself, we have a few local shops. We have quite a lot of hospitality because we're a fairly, it's a touristy destination. So quite a few pubs and a couple of hotels. We have a library still. I'm not sure exactly what the future of that is. And we have a primary school and we have an online farmer's market that I was involved in setting up. A couple of years ago, we also have a community growing area as well, actually. Which we set up a couple of years ago. So there are, so so in some things we're fairly well well set up. There are some key services missing though in in Drumm. So that so you have to go to the kind of local, other local villages to get to get to those things. One of the key ones is a proper kind of grocery store. We do have a spa. But it's not, it's quite small, it's not that great. So very few people do all their shopping can do, can do all their shopping in in Drumm. So we don't have a bank. We used to, we don't also don't have a post office anymore. We used to. So those two things came back. Were all commented on quite widely in our survey because the fact that they were here and now they're not, people notice that they're not here anymore and they miss them. And we, and the high school isn't in the, isn't in in Drumm. You have to go to Balfrom to get to the high school. But that actually, there is a, there is a bus, a school bus that goes and takes the kids and brings them back every day. So for for in school stuff, that's fine, as long as they're not doing after school activities, which makes it more difficult. So in the general feeling we got from from our. From the survey was that the residents accept that the village, that it's a small village. And it doesn't, so so there are some amenities that it's it's missing. And that's the kind of trade off from living in a in a small village in the national park. But the thing that I think comes out very strongly that people. Do miss and and would like is better access to the to all the amenities. And facilities that are in the neighboring, that are in the neighboring villages. And also in the local towns and in the larger towns and cities. They say that we can't even get to the local villages without a car, really. And and the same with Stirling and Glasgow. There's really, there's no public transport to either of those, either of those cities. So so the so the top priority that came out of the twenty minute neighborhood study. And and as the as the study was being evolved and was being developed, it changed into the, it changed into a. Into a Living Well Locally study became the new kind of name for it because because we realized that twenty minutes doesn't really, doesn't really work. For for Drumm at least. But the main priorities that came out were more shared paths. Both within the village and also between villages. Public transport, absolutely, definitely a key thing that that's required. And actually, there's two sides to that. One is just so locals can get around and get to local villages, to the other local villages and into the. Into the cities, but also to try and reduce the number of cars that come into the, into Drumm and into Balma Hare, which is on the side of Loch Lomond. Went through the tourists that are coming in and whether whether they can, and that's something the national park are looking at, is whether they can get some kind of. Bus systems to set up specifically to bring tourists to to the area. Parking was a real issue in the in the village. Particularly around the village square, which is, you know, the kind of centerpiece of the village. Because it basically gets in the way. Lots of people park quite often on where they shouldn't be parking. And it actually, if you're a pedestrian or cyclist, it makes it quite difficult to to get around. So that follows on to pedestrian priority and that's something we're working on, is to try and make the center of our village. More focused on pedestrians getting around than than cars getting around. And then we've talked a bit about park and ride and cycling for. Yeah, tourist traffic and whether we can actually get buses. But not just bring people into the area, but that could also bring them with their bikes so they could actually then go and cycle around. Rather than just being dumped in Drumm or Balma Hare. These are the, these are the kind of other priorities that came up. As a as a result of the the survey. And better use of really spaces is one, and I think that that actually speaks to some specific issues we've got with where where we have. Buildings in quite key places that are that are currently disused, that that could really benefit the the village. And, yeah, there are issues through there that we are kind of working through to try and let that happen. The the lack under resources, the 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 lack of the grocery, the bank and the post office. Came through very, very strongly. Another thing that came up. Venues to meet, so so places for local people to meet. I mean, obviously, there are, there are, there are pubs. But that's that's not ideal for a lot of the time. And then we have a village hall, but there are, but yes, people would like better places to meet teenagers particularly, would like somewhere to hang out. But also I think a lot of the older community would like other places to meet. And. Affordable housing, that's that's been a bone of contention for a while in the village. But we have a new housing development and there's a ongoing, which is not built yet. And there's an ongoing kind of discussion about what the split should be between social housing and more expensive housing. So that came up. But a lot of the, quite a few of the issues that are in this other priority slide, when you look at them. Are actually, again, tied into to movement. So there's the whole, there's issues around. Speeding, traffic car speeding, making people feel unsafe on the on the streets, safe streets, footpath and road maintenance. So movement, the whole movement issue is coming up again and again. A slight aside to the twenty minute neighborhood, but this all ties in. We also, the twenty minute neighborhood was done with, done this this last kind of or last autumn and winter. Actually, the year before that, we also did. We put together an active travel action plan and that's a piece of work. That we did with Loch Lomond and the Trossocks Countryside Trust, who are another charity linked to the national park, but very involved in in active travel. Amongst other things. And the top five concerns that we that came back from that. And it was a, it was a survey that went out to everyone in the village. We got one hundred and sixteen responses, which for a village of about three hundred houses is not a bad. Response. And the top five concerns that came out of that were traffic, lack of safe routes to local villages. Poor accessibility, particularly poor footways, lack of connectivity. And then and then in terms of getting to the other villages, weather and distance came up. And I don't think, I think weather is one that we decided we probably can't fix. So so we just haven't believed that one as it is, but but you can see that 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 the the things that came up in the active travel action plan very much kind of. Chimed in with the the results that came from the from the neighborhood, the twenty minute neighborhood survey. So. So in summary, the things that come up for us are are not so much about the lack of. Immunities and facilities, because they are there, it's just the fact that they're not necessarily in the village. And it's really about ways of trying to get to other, to to the to the other villages without having to rely on the car, on cars so much. So this is the kind of things we've been doing as the Development Trust to try and kind of nudge people. Towards towards more kind of active travel and kind of remove some of the barriers. And I think, so we've got, we've got two e-bikes in the village that are. That we loan out to people typically for ten days at a time and it's really like. Like for them to have a go and see whether e-bikes are right for them. And it and it's, and we have had quite a few people, I mean, quite a few people have used them. Numerous times and also quite a few people have used them and then have gone and bought e-bikes and and actually. For the distances we're looking at around the village and between us and neighboring villages, e-bikes are a really good solution. We can see them making a big difference, although I think. My suspicion is that they are used by most people more for leisure. Kind of leisure and cycling rather than active travel where you're actually going somewhere to do a particular. Particular tasks. And I think actually, that is possibly an issue with quite a few of the things that we are. That we're doing, that they they are, they're definitely supporting leisure. Leisure travel as a leisure cycling, walking, maybe not so much, actually people getting jobs done by by cycling or or walking. So we've got our e-bikes. We also have five trained cycle ride leaders in the village now. And we have weekly Drumm cycle meanders, which I think. The main, the main benefit of that is it builds up, it's really kind of building social capital in the village around kind of more active. uh in the village around kind of more um active ways of uh of transport. And again, it's a leisure activity, but it's probably people, a lot of the people who come on it, and we have a fairly good, a solid group of people who tend to come along, are people who maybe wouldn't have gone out on their bikes otherwise. So it's just kind of nudging them out, out into the, into the kind of direction of getting on, on, out on, on the bikes more. Um. We've produced a, a, some local cycle routes in a, in a little leaflet with um links to to maps. So that people uh know where they, know where there are some nice routes that they can go on, um that are um not on busy roads, so they feel relatively safe. Um. At the beginning of this year, we had a doctor bike session where um uh, uh, a guy from Recycle Bike in Stirling came out and spent a day fixing people's bikes. Um. There he is, there, what you can't see is the, just to the left of the photo, the massive pile of bikes that people came and kind of dug out of their sheds to uh, to, to let him have a, have a go at. And he actually, he um, he ran out of time, he, he, there were so many people brought bikes out and left the you know, and left them for him that um he couldn't get through them all. But that was a good nudge to get people, again, get people um get the bikes out of the shed for the summer. Um. We work, we work with Stirling Council on, under their Safe Roots to School um initiative. This, this photo is the village is our, is our village square, which is obviously right in the centre of the village, um and it's quite a pretty um area. But actually, um bizarrely really, it didn't have um a pavement going along the side of it from the top to the bottom. So people ended up, if they were trying to walk across this area, um and it's quite a busy um space. They either ended up going on the grass or or more often actually, especially in the winter when it was muddy, they ended up just walking along, it's sort of in the road. And they're kind of in amongst all the parked cars along the side of the road. So, so um, so Stirling Council um put that in under their Safe Roots to School initiative. And actually, it's um as well as making people, making it easier for people to get around the village, it's amazing how this area, and you can see the benches um sitting there, now that it's a bit further away from the roads, how many people just come and sit in the park? Just sit on the benches in the sunshine in the morning. Um. And maybe get a coffee from the, from the dally across the road and come and sit in sunshine and, and drink it. So it's, it's, it's provided quite a nice kind of uh uh sort of quality area to come and sit. Um. Let's go. Um. We've also refurbished our bus stop recently, uh so it doesn't get used that often for buses unfortunately. But we do now have um a solar-powered um, um, a solar-powered roof. And that powers these um e-bike chargers, which are, which are the um, so that's uh, that's particularly helpful for opening up um people who are doing the long, M C N seven, the long-distance bike ride, because on their, on e-bikes, because it means they've got somewhere they can stop and stop and charge. So that's uh, that's quite nice. Uh. And we've also got this tool station for bikes and also a top-up tap um which came from uh Scottish Water, which, which, again, given that we're on the West Island Way and all these various long-distance, long-distance routes, those are being uh well-used. And all of these things together have made the, the kind of the village square, because a lot of these are sort of focused around the village square, a kind of nicer place, uh, 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 yeah, nicer place to, to be. And we've also recently, and that's the inside of our bus shelter, which has now just recently been repainted to, to kind of mark the fact that it's the start of the Robberoy Way and it has two um has a map on each end, one showing M C N seven and the other showing the route of the Robberoy Way. Um. And that was uh done by um, by, yeah, uh, a young nineteen-year-old guy who lives in the, he lives in the village, which is, which is great. So I think, I, I will, I, I think, I say, a lot of this encourages leisure travel rather than active travel, but hopefully it's pushing us in the right direction. But the problem we have in the village, and I think maybe the thing we're, we're going to, we're sort of starting to look at next, but the hardest nut to crack for us is um is the safer routes to other villages. Because at the moment, people just, whatever we do in, in the village to try and make it more cycle-friendly or walk-friendly, the fact that you can't get to other villages without going on um busy roads with lots of fast cars, um, just will stop people doing it. So, so. So a kind of ongoing and future activities in uh as, as the trust i- in the, in the village. Um. So we're currently updating our place plan based on the, the, the kind of recent studies, the twenty-minute neighbourhood and the active travel um studies uh and, and that hopefully, and we're doing some more consultation as well. And hopefully that will really give us a um, yeah, a list of priorities that we need to address. Um. We are, we've just got funding for a traffic calming trial around the village square, but the, the the village square is also the, the main road through, through kind of Drumm and goes just alongside the square. And, and that, that main road is um, is thirteen metres across for historical reasons. Um. But it doesn't, really doesn't need to be anymore. And we also, that was also, the main road has no um crossings, has no zebra crossings or pelican crossings or anything like that across it. So. So we're, we're about to do a traffic calming trial, trial around the village square. We, we narrow that main road right down as it's coming past the square and also put some kind of crossing in. Um. That's a temporary trial at, at the moment. But hopefully, if that goes well, then we'll be able to uh find some funding to make that permanent. And again, it's, that's just all about making the centre of the village more friendly for um, for pedestrians and cyclists to, to move around. Um. We're working with uh Path Group in uh, in some of the other villages. And, and just planning to get a feasibility study done to see if we can link um Drumm into Balfron, which is where the high school is, so that maybe would open up uh the opportunity for kids to cycle probably in the summer to, to school rather than get the bus. And all the other things that we all, that all the village goes to Balfron um for. Um. So, I mean, that's, it's about four or five miles. Sustrans um uh requirements for, for multi-use paths are getting uh more um challenging, I think, all the time, if you're in a, if you're in a rural area. Um. But we will see what, we'll see if we can do something um around that. Um. Uh. We're also looking at getting some e-bikes that were, that rather than people have them for uh ten days of time, people can take them for an hour or two hours at a time and they live in some lockers in, in the, somewhere near the village square. And people have an app that they can access them and take them out and bring them back. And um, we're discussing buses within, with the national park. Um. So they're keen to look at buses as, as a way of getting tourists in and out of our area, we, we spot Lomond as well. So we're, we're hoping to do something around that. Because but, because our lack of buses is a real issue, although whether the national, what the national park wants buses for and what we as a community want buses for is, is is probably arguable, because really, we just want to get to our other local villages. Um. And then, I mean, I don't think this really quite falls under the twenty-minute um uh neighbourhood banner. But um, we currently have no, have no public toilets in the village, despite being on all these long-distance routes and having lots of uh, lots of visitors. So, and that's, so that is becoming um a problem that we need to, we need to address. Um. So in terms of twenty-minute neighbourhoods in a, in a, in a rural uh setting. Um. So we, we kind of replaced the twenty-minute neighbourhood title with living well locally. Um. Because that kind of feels that, as though that works better for us. So, and, and, and we're trying to make that. So we've got the features of that twenty-minute neighbourhood, but it's, but the key thing is to connect them by high-quality active travel or public transport routes. So within that, within our cluster of villages, we can get most of the things um that most people want for most of the time. It's just getting, it's just getting to them, that's the, the problem. And, and of course, there are some things, you know, more specialist things that are never going to fit in, in that um i- in our twenty-minute neighbourhood or, or our kind of, our local cluster of villages that you will need to go to Glasgow or Stirling for. But, but most things we think we can get, if we can get the connections working. Um. So we're now collaborating more in, in our area with the other local villages to see how we can, how we can progress that. And um, lastly, I think uh we've had a lot of um support with the work we've been doing from the fourth, from Fourth Environment Link, from the um, the National Park Authority and also from Loch Lomond and the Trossachs Countryside Trust, and also Stirling Council, who I should have mentioned there as well. So they've always, they've all really helped and the uh it's felt as though we've all kind of been trying to push in the right, in the, in the same direction, which has been um very encouraging. So there we go. That's it from me about what we've been doing uh in Drumm to try and realise our, our twenty-minute neighbourhoods. Um. And I'm happy to take any questions either now or my email address is, is also there on that, on that last slide. So people are also welcome to get in touch with me after this, after this event.
Thank you very much, Richard. And that was great. And, and it was great to have the contrast with seeing you and to Sam, looking at what it's been like using this concept um uh locally. So if anyone has any questions for uh Richard, that would be great. You can either put them in the chat or put your hand up, as people have done in the previous session. And I suppose I wanted to actually ask you, uh because I suppose the living well locally was a phrase that came up at the very first meeting of um this network. I think Dermot Lawler from Scottish Futures Trust talked about using that phrase, him getting more comfortable using that phrase sort of unilaterally, because it can apply across a range of types of settlement. When you decided not, was it you that decided not to use twenty-minute neighbourhoods and use live well locally as a team with Fourth Environment Link, because you knew it would land well, or were you already detecting that twenty-minute neighbourhoods wasn't landing well as a phrase in working with the community?
Well, I think, I mean, Stuart, uh, Fourth Environment Link, um, I think he, he probably made that decision. And I, yes, I think it was basically because when he started doing the council, various consultations and things, um, I think a lot of the community. Yeah, the twenty-minute neighbourhood, uh, yeah, that, that twenty-minute thing didn't really make sense to lots of people. They couldn't, to them, they were a bit sort of dismissive of it. They were like, well, that's, you know, that's not going to work. So, so then we, yeah, we kind of broadened it and softened it a bit to the living well locally thing. I mean, I do think um uh, I mean, so we did lots of consultation and I feel we're very good on that. And, and it's been very useful for us. I think um, I think if you went to the school, I think a lot of the, the kids there would know, would understand what the twenty-minute neighbourhood idea was. I think if you kind of wandered around asking locals, they would, they would, they would know about it, but they probably wouldn't know. But they would know that it's happened and they would know what's happening as a result, but they might not understand the concept of the twenty-minute neighbourhood still. So, yeah.
Yeah, that's the point you said confirmed, because we, earlier in the year, we did some work with Scottish Rural Action, I'm sure. And it kind of, and came out in that, that communities' expectations, living rudely, are understandably different. So they're not expecting absolutely everything to be delivered within twenty minutes of their doorstep. And so it's how, about how we kind of get that within a, a policy and uh context is maybe more of a challenge. There's a question from Peter Nod, how you solve the twenty-minute concept as a way to develop your place plan? Albeit it didn't fit very well.
Um. So what's the question? Have it? Uh. Well, it was, hmm, it was, it was, it's been really, it's, I mean, it's been really useful, because the questions that we were, I mean, the questions that, that were asked as part of that twenty-minute neighbourhood survey are, are very similar to the questions we would be asking as the, as part of our, our place plan. So a lot of the place plan, there are certain gaps that, that we need to fill before we can do the place plan. In particular, I think um businesses were, in the village, were a bit underrepresented, underrepresented in, in the um in, in the twenty-minute neighbourhood um work that was done. Um. But generally, I, I, a lot of, oh, yeah, there's a huge overlap. So I think a lot of it will be used almost directly in our place plan.
And how did you find the use of the place standard?
Well, that's a good question. I, I, and I can't really answer that, because that was, um, I mean, Stuart was um Stuart was really the person who was doing that, kind of designing that side of things. Um. Yes, I'm not sure.
And in terms of your discussions, because obviously it's clear from what you, that what you presented, that the connection with the, with the neighbouring villages is, is crucial, particularly for school. And beyond uh the nine-to-four bit of schooling. And what is the conversation like with the National Park Authority about providing some form of public transport that connects them?
Well, I think, to be honest, I think we, we've been talking to the national park about, about buses. But, but I think the conversation we need to be having probably about that, about, about connecting the villages is actually probably more with Stirling Council, because they are, I think they're the people who have the control over that. And um, uh, and we haven't really gone down that, we haven't really started down that, that side of things yet. I mean, we did have um, we did have demand-responsive transport. You know, where you can, but you have to ring up before three o'clock the previous day to book essentially a taxi. Um. So I think that works for a few people, but it, I mean, unless you're quite organised and you have quite specific things you want to do. Uh, then I, I don't think it's been very well used. And actually, I, yesterday, just before this, uh, because I knew this was happening today, I, I did try and organise some demand-responsive transport. It seems to have disappeared from the, from Stirling's website. So I don't know whether it's even operating anywhere. So.
Okay. And this, this is pointing, J D Wilkinson's asking, how did the development trust engage with other anchor organisations such as the Community Council?
Yes, the Community Council, um, we have, we have some overlap. So um so, so are, um, and we, and we are pushing to increase that actually. So we do have people on the Development Trust who are also on the Community Council. Um. And, and actually, and for the place plan, we have a, a working group. And that involved that, we do have people, specifically, we've made sure we have people from the Community Council on that. So it's something we, I think historically, we were not that great at, but we are, we are trying to make sure they work more closely together.
Okay. Uh, uh, obviously, it's not without its challenges. This is a question for me. Would you recommend other communities doing the, doing what you're doing? Um.
Yes.
Around, yeah.
Yeah, I, I'd absolutely, yeah. And I, and I think, I think for us, um, the twenty-minute neighbourhood study was a really nice structure to, to carry out some work and produce something that kind of um just helped focus what we wanted to do, what the community wanted to do. So it's really, I mean, I say, it's really been something that's helped us kind of build up our, our place plan. And I think if you look at most communities, um, there are people doing similar things to what we're doing. There are people trying to, you know, and it depends from village to village, what their kind of passion is or what their focus is, what, what the specific issues are. But I think generally, villages have people in it who are trying to build social capital or, you know, influence the infrastructure to make them nicer places to live in one way or another.
Okay, I think, yeah, I mean, the reason I'm asking that is because, because I'm aware that we have a lot of them, people from local authorities on the Zoom today. And, and I think it's important for them to hear that, that supporting this sort of work and has value and that has value to you around social capacity, even if everything is delivered as a result of what the community discusses. The social capital, to me, would be an important aspect of that in itself.
Yeah. And, and the other thing, I think, from a purely pragmatic point of view, the fact that we have our active travel survey and our, and our um twenty-minute neighbourhood um report and also in the place plan coming on, that's actually, just purely pragmatically, that is really useful when we want to find funding for something. Because funders will say, well, how, you know, how can you prove that your community supports this or whatever? And we can say, well, we've got this study and, and this study and, 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 you know, that is really helpful. So that's, that's helped us a lot as well. Um. As, as has having good relationships with Stirling Council, you know, they, they've really helped us with um, with a, with a couple of things that have been really valuable for the village. So, yeah.
Okay. But that comes back to you having the capacity as an organisation to do that. And, and that you, you have the agency um to act in that role within the community. And.
Yes, and it, and it does take up, I mean, you know, it's, it's, I think, uh, from what I can tell, these things seem to go in, in sort of cycles of activity. And we seem to be within, within Drumm, and we seem to be at a sort of high point of activity uh at the moment in terms of trying to get things done. But I don't know, yeah, it hasn't always been like that.
One question from Barbara Care, preempting one that I may have asked. And what one thing other than direct funding has most helped you develop to this point and would you, and would help you moving forward?
Um. Yes, I, I mean, we've, we have been lucky in that we have had, as a development trust, had quite a strong enthusiasm. As a development trust, had quite a strong enthusiastic team for the last two or three years. And that, I think, has meant. That we therefore have. Developed quite good relationships with the with the with the organisations that can that can help us, particularly Sterling Council and the National Park Authority. And and the fact that, the fact that they are aware of what we're doing. Um, means that they have, you know, so they came to us, I think, I think they came to us and said, look. We're quite interested in twenty minute neighbourhoods stuff. And we actually knew F E R from work we've done on the community garden here and and other things with them before. And they said, would you like to do this as a kind of uh as a pilot scheme for the National Park? So I think, yes, it's, it's been useful that we've, we've kind of gathered some momentum and other people have been aware of what we're doing, and that's helped, helped do more things.
Okay, that's good to hear. Thank you very much, Richard. So um. It's coming near twelve o'clock and people have obviously got other meetings trapped in. So people are already saying they've been really enjoyed with Hassan. And your presentation. So thanks very much, Richard. And and hopefully we'll be able to tap into both you and Sue again to find out how things are developing. Over the years, um, as as things come to fruition. And if there's any, I suppose, distinct developments, particularly around the public transport aspect. And it'd be, it would be helpful from my perspective, but sir, to hear back from you on that, if you have success on that, because. We know not just through this network, but through other community organisations, we've talked to the the public transport and element of. How people are living is is extremely challenging to make sure that people are consistently provided with public transport across the day. And to where they get, where they need to get to. So it'd be interesting to see how that develops. So thank you. And Hussam, you had said you wanted to bring something back into, to say something in the meeting.
I just, I really enjoyed the Richard and very much enjoy as well the bottom up approach. So I have learned really a lot from it, how you make the twenty minutes neighbourhood. Very specific and tailored towards the 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 the, how do you want me to say, the area itself. And seriously, it's not about the the phrase itself or the title. It's what matters to people in the ground. Let us put it this way. But just a couple of things, if you allow me to say, I I I put a quote in in the chat, which always I love from Yan Gail. He said one day, people don't change then their behaviour when you tell them to. People change their behaviour when the context complies them to. I think context and creating the context is really very, very key to me in here. I think we are responsible. The second one, which is very vital, we are dealing with two or three different set of issues. You have existing neighbourhoods and how to deal with them in terms of. Densifying existing neighbourhoods, more connections, more linkages, but also the use of underutilised spaces and buildings. If you think about it, my goodness, Dundee City Centre, Monifis, Monifis, Arbroath. Uh, 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 how do you want me to say, Bears City Centre? We need to bring more people into it. We need, but to do so, you need to invest more into what we have already. Let us really make the town centres policy and the village centres policy number one priority, at least for the next ten years. Before we give bear mission to any suburban housing state in Scotland. I know this is maybe a dream, but let us make this policy active and proactive. And using most of what we have, but equally, let us have a clear vision for the new houses we build. For the next ten or twenty years. And the last things I would like to urge all my the local colleagues in local authorities. Recession's already, we are in another recession now, inflation, or local authorities under huge pressures. I am worried about the skills. We need more urban designers and more architects and planners who champion. Uh, place principles in this country. We need people to understand especially what twenty minutes looks like on the ground. And I would, I would urge all local authorities to invest more into design. Design is not about aesthetics, my friend. Design is more than that. We really need to invest in what on design matter most. This concept, really, quality and experience matter most. Thank you.
Thanks very much, Hassan. And I think actually what you picked up on is, you're picking up on both Anthony McGinnis and Francis, you have picked up on something. Broadly similar, which is come back to the context in which we work. And if the context is, well, you can get away with doing the same old thing, then you'll get away with doing the same old thing because you don't have to change. And it's giving um. Decision makers across local authorities the confidence to say no to things. Um, to make sure that better things happen, but they, this was because I think. Um, Anthony specifically refers to the field process, we need a national, we need national policies to be strong. So that both the reporters can continue to say no to things, despite a need for housing that we'd have to say that the housing needs to be. Of of a better quality for the very, very long term. And it's the one, it's not the one thing. But one of the reasons I think twenty two neighbourhoods, I'm hopeful about it, is if it's a national planning framework for for ten years. And if it's powerful, then that is the, it sets an agenda for a a longer period of time and to drive that change. So, but thank you very much to both, to both Hussam and Richard for your contributions today and to many of the really constructive. And interesting aspects that have been put into the channel. And Ali Sami, I have to acknowledge your comment because obviously we are. Hussam refers to the fact that we are in a recession and and obviously what's happening in the economy is is. Pretty dramatic just now, but and it means really, really dark consequences for some people on a day to day level. So having. Those people are not in a position to be thinking long term because their daily needs are not currently being met. And and despite energy price caps, that's not meeting. And that does not meet the um fuel poverty that they currently uh endure. And so it's quite, it can be challenging to have these conversations when we're facing an imminent crisis. But we also have to have these conversations so that we can prevent these crises, crises happening uh in the future. It's twelve o'clock and I'm going to kind of wind up now, but if anyone has anything they want to share, I've I've already touched base with them. Jonathan Clarkson to hope to have a conversation with him about inviting Kirkington Ross to share their. Uh, current work on this topic in the future, future because of the network. Is there anything else that anybody wants to tell us about just now? Or drop me a line and to come back to future events? Now is your opportunity. You can raise your hand and speak or you can put message in the chat. But if not. I'm going to say thank you very much. So thank you very much again to our speakers and thank you very much to you for joining us uh this morning. And I hope you all enjoy the best of your day. Thank you.